Okay. Welcome to the April, oops, sorry guys. Welcome to the April fifteenth, twenty twenty one, West Sacramento Planning Commission meeting. We continue meet via live teleconference pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N dash twenty nine dash twenty to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. Members of the public have been invited to watch the meeting via wave cable on our local channel twenty, streaming online through the city's website or through the Zoom platform. Tonight's agenda and all agenda item materials are available on the city's website on the Planning Commission page. Public comments submitted by five P M via email to the Planning Commission clerk are available for consideration and are posted on the city website, along with the agenda and link to the live streaming video of this meeting so that all commissioners and community members can see the complete text and supplemental information. Members of the public participating via Zoom may also make oral comments during item one A, prior to the first item on consent, and after the staff presentation for any other items on the agenda. The commission clerk will note the commenters for each item and call you by name when it is your turn to speak. With that, we'll proceed to tonight's agenda. So, first item is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission.
We have nobody on the line for comment here, and we have no written comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so part one B correspondence and staff communications from the Planning Commission Secretary.
Yes, briefly, just wanted to note for the commission tonight, we don't have our city attorney present tonight, given that we don't have projects up for consideration tonight, so we will do our best to wing it without him this evening, but he'll certainly be back for our next meeting once we have, you know, projects to be considered tonight's information. Tonight will be is more of a educational session for the commission.
And with that, Mr. Tilly, do the planning commissioners have to disclose ex parte communications on info items?
I, I would think we could probably dispense with that. The, the general plan and zoning code are like fully public documents readily accessible to anyone, so I don't think that's necessary. We just leave that on the agenda. Just it's a standard placeholder item, so we don't forget, but I think tonight we can probably dispense with that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then we'll, let's move to item two on the agenda, consideration approval of the minutes from the April first, twenty twenty one meeting. Any discussion or, oh, Commissioner Hirsch.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Mariswak, can you do the roll call, please?
Who was the second?
Commissioner Lockhart.
Commissioner Eskel.
Aye.
Commissioner Lockhart.
Aye.
Commissioner Deanda.
Aye.
Commissioner Stegert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner.
Aye.
Sheriff Sablon.
Aye.
With that, the motion passes. Okay, and turning to the regular agenda, we have item three, presentation and discussion of general plan twenty thirty five and its environmental impact report.
Yes, so I'll be doing this one, and I was looking forward to doing this at our last meeting, and obviously I was not really up to it then, but tonight I'm ready to go. So I have a PowerPoint put up, so Ben will put that up here, hopefully here momentarily. But I just want to start off with preference here. It's not my intention whatsoever that the commissioners, you know, because I forgot to change the date, sorry about that. It's not my expectation that the, that any planning commissioner become a real authority on the general plan. It's not our, my expectation whatsoever that, you know, you will, you know, memorize it or anything of that nature. What I am hoping though is as time goes by, you'll, you know, get a, get a working knowledge of the, just the, the themes and the various topics that the general plan covers. As you'll note in multi-staff, project level staff reports, almost every project we do does require a review of it against relevant general plan policies. So you will see those in almost every staff report that you get. But tonight, at least, since we had a, you know, a night where we didn't have projects ready, I wanted to take the opportunity to sort of walk you through it still at a high level of our general plan and, but also as a preview of, you know, some work on the general plan that we're, we're doing now that will likely come before the planning commission, you know, later this year. So Ben, if you wouldn't mind advancing slide. So here's a little general plan one oh one, and again, this is, you know, sort of high level. It is a requirement in state law. Every community in California has a general plan. And that's nothing new. They go back decades and decades. There are seven mandatory elements in the general plan, and I'll, I'll cover those as we go through. You can think of elements as a chapter, you know, element, just terminology. But beyond the seven mandatory ones, you can put in really any other, you know, policy element that you want. And most communities do do that based on their particular circumstances and needs. And we are one of those communities. And I'll, I'll get to that in a particular important and something I'm particularly proud of, you know, as we get into this. General plan really is a long-term view. It's usually looks out twenty to thirty years. There's not a magic time horizon, but it is meant to take a long-term view and to guide things are with that long-term matter and positive, long-term lens on things. Each of the elements, you need to be internally consistent. You know, we can't have a land use element say build over here and then a natural resources element says, don't build over here because they're wetlands, you know, things of that nature. And it's, it, the general plan in day-to-day life is implemented in a variety of ways, but the most typical day-to-day thing is zoning. And we'll hear about that in the next presentation. But there are other ways that implemented a specific plan or, you know, some form of area plan, things of that nature that, you know, try to take the general plan, which is citywide, it's sort of thirty thousand foot level. And, you know, start to bring that down to the ground with a little more specificity. General plans are called general, I think, you know, intentionally because it is meant to be kept sort of at that thirty thousand foot level. And the temptation is to always get more specific and we have to sort of check ourselves there. Because, you know, a citywide level, it's, you know, in each neighborhood is different characteristics. So you'll want to start off with that foundation, and then you may want to look at a certain neighborhood and then drill down, you know, a little further, you know, with a specific plan or, you know, something, you know, of that nature. So, next slide, please. So this is just a little bit of hierarchy. The general plan is sort of the foundation, you know, for really everything that a city does. It, it isn't just about development or land use. It goes across the board, you know, A to Z topics. So the general plan is sort of that foundation. And then these other types of planning documents and implementation documents are really crafted to then implement those general plan policies, you know, in the real world and sort of in, you know, day-to-day, you know, day-to-day life. So right now we have two specific plans in existence, one in Washington and one in the Bridge District. We are working on a third one right now that hopefully will be coming before the commission, you know, later this year. And then master plan documents for infrastructure are based off what's in the general plan. General plan has a, has a, a build-out amount. And those, that type of information feeds directly into, you know, how much water we need, how much sewer capacity we need, mobility, how people get, are going to get around. And then sort of the, sort of the third column there, the climate action plan, which we're also working on now, is really also an implementation document of, you know, sort of high-level climate-related policies in the general plan. So a lot of plans are just that, but sort of the, the master plan and the climate action plan are really implementation documents that we base our capital improvement program on, for example. And then also everything we're going to need to be doing, you know, climate-wise. So next slide, please. So it's sort of a high-level thing of the general plan, E I R, Environmental Impact Report. It's really was down here as it states at a program level, meaning that it doesn't drill down into every parcel of land in our city lot by lot and evaluate everything, you know, on a lot-by-lot basis. It's in the aggregate. So it does identify various impacts and mitigations if those are available. And our particular E I R was set up by design to provide sort of maximum streamlining after, for, after the general plan, it was adopted for successive projects. That's what we call the within the scope findings, and your commission has already done this on a couple of projects. And over the last couple of years, the commission has done that on several projects. And that was by design to try to avoid reinventing the wheel, you know, every single time with a project. So this is by design. Environmental impacts reports are rooted in the California Environmental Quality Act, which for decades has attempted to have a lot more streamlining and encourage people to sort of do master E I Rs and then be able to tier what we call tier from them so that you're not doing the same analysis over and over and over again. There's some caveats to that, but that's sort of the general theme. Whereas, you know, once you've looked at this stuff holistically, then you can maybe drill into some specifics, but you're not always going back to square one. And this is important for city projects as well as private development projects. But it also doesn't mean that because we've done the E I R that it's a get out of jail free card forever either. Times change, background circumstances change, and, you know, eventually E I Rs can become stale. Now, there's not a specific time, timeframe on them. Some E I Rs have lasted twenty years, some only a couple of years. It all depends on the circumstances and what's happening really around us, because we are, obviously, we don't live on, in a bubble, we are influenced by what's going on in the rest of the region too. So, next slide, please. So this is a, a quick synopsis of our, you know, thirty, thirty-some years of history in our community. We incorporated nineteen eighty-seven, and our first general plan was done in nineteen ninety, which included, I believe, the first element of the general plan specifically dedicated to childcare way back in nineteen ninety. And we have maintained a, a specific childcare element really ever since. That was very advanced at the time. It's a lot more, lot more common by now, but in nineteen ninety, that was kind of a first. And childcare was recognized not only for the importance of care for children, but also recognizing that quality, having quality childcare available hopefully can allow their parents to be in the workforce more and to be able to, you know, contribute on that level. There was a big update in two thousand. And then in twenty sixteen, we did the last major update to the general plan, which is one that I largely managed back then. And so we are operating off our twenty sixteen general plan right now, although we are working on updating it already. So in the intervening years, there's been some minor updates in there. You know, when certain state legislation comes down, sometimes we have to make changes. And a special note, the housing element is sort of a, I mean, one usually kind of stands alone in a way because the housing element is the only part of the general plan that requires a specific state approval. And it's on a, it's on these timeframes about every, it used to be every five years, and now it's on every eight years. So our current housing element update is almost done. The planning commission did took its final action on it at the end of last year. So I don't, some of you weren't on, many of you weren't on the commission then. But that will be going to council here probably next month because it's, it needs to be approved and in the can, I believe by June. So housing element sometimes takes on a life of its own. And we are, you know, obligated to update it on this cycle, and if we don't, we get in big trouble. So fortunately, we've been able to complete that this year, and I think it's been a good process. And by, by the way, if anyone has any questions along the way, before I get to the elements, please, please say so. Right, Ben, next slide, please. Okay, so here we're going to get into the elements or chapters of the general plan. The land use element, you know, I think as the name implies, is mostly about land use. It is one of the seven required elements in the general plan. It includes a land use map and land use designations. Every parcel in the city has a land use designation in the general plan. And the land use element also addresses a hopefully healthy land use mix of, you know, residential, commercial, open space, parks, et cetera, you know, like, you know, and most cities are kind of a mosaic of land use types. So, so this is a, one of those tried and true ones, and, and in every, everybody's general plan. It does tend to be one of the ones that gets the most amount of attention because it is about development and growth, and obviously growth is a big issue in many communities. It certainly has been in our community as well. But this is, you know, definitely one of those core ones that you'll find in anybody's general plan. So, next slide, please. So this is our land use map. I, I recognize that the scale, look, a map of the entire city might be a little hard to read. And I'd be happy to, you know, give anybody copy of this. It's on our website. But every parcel in town has a land use designation on it. And when we did the general plan update in twenty sixteen, we actually created some new designations along some of our major corridors to try to get a little more mixed use built in there, more flexibility for projects, especially in areas where we weren't seeing a lot of development interest. Sometimes after a couple of decades. And I think some of that is, has kind of started to pay off. Seamus is working on a couple of housing projects on Sacramento Avenue. Right now, we were entertaining another housing project in the Stone Lock area, which is the area right along well Lock's Drive and Jefferson Boulevard, just south of the Barge Canal. And so hopefully some of these things are starting to help us get there and be ready for when the market is ready for some of these desired land uses. Because really, the, the market is, no matter what I zone stuff, the market really drives a lot of what's happening. So, so this is sort of overall, you know, land use map. And there, of course, Seamus will later show you a corresponding zoning map too. Next slide, please. So this is the, this, what I call themes, if you will, these are, this is sort of the, the sort of the concepts that I'm, I'm hoping as time goes by, you know, the commission will, you know, get a little more of a working knowledge of. There's numerous policies and goals in the, in the each element. I'm not going to go through every one of them one by one because we'd be here all night long and into tomorrow. But the policies generally address these kind of themes. And many of these, I think these themes, you know, largely, so to speak, for themselves. But from, these are just the over, the high-level themes, you know, citywide, where from a land use standpoint, these are the topics or themes that the land use policies and the land use element address in, you know, in various ways. So in, you know, the land use policy again is, those are one of the ones that's a little more straightforward in terms of what's in there. You would expect it to talk about parks and residential areas and commercial areas, things of that nature. So, of course, the big one, and why I put it first, is sustainability. We made a huge effort in that as an overall theme in general plan this last time around, and if anything, it's only going to get, you know, more and more important and more and more front and center, you know, as we go forward in this, you know, era of climate change, you know, that we're already experiencing. So before I move on to the next element, is there any questions on the land use element at this time? Here, hearing, hearing none. Maybe we'll move on to the next one. Ben, please. All right, here's a, here's sort of a fun one, too. This is one of the optional elements. This is something we've always had in our general plan. But we really have tried to, you know, get a little, be a little more design savvy in our community as time has gone by. Again, these are some of the themes that are, you know, you know, in this particular element, sort of recognizing that we have, you know, different neighborhoods and different conditions in our city. We want to make sure that those areas are, you know, preserved and enhanced, but still trying to sort of raise the bar citywide, if you will, on architecture and site design, you know, as time goes by. I think the gateways box there in the middle is one of the important ones. You know, our city has many gateways that the whole world sees, not just, you know, our local residents. And we certainly want to have a positive impression of our community as people traverse it or come into town and then leave town at the various gateways. So, you know, this is an area where I think is particularly important as we're, you know, growing and maturing city, but also a city that has a lot of existing context and history that we want to preserve as well. Ben? All right, economic development element. This is a new one for us, but very important. I think we all recognize that, you know, every city tries to do economic development and build its tax base and, you know, be available for business and workforce development. So this is one, we did this last year. Our current city manager in his prior role, you know, wrote a lot of this, you know, with input from me and others. And we really wanted to have this particular element to really be able to, you know, state for the whole world that, you know, economic development is a core priority of the city. And so we really don't need to have that because it's been our priority all the time, but having it in the general plan just gives it that much more foundation and gives us that long-term view, especially since, you know, economic development often, you know, is a long-term endeavor. A lot of market conditions influence these things, no matter what we do. So these are some of the, you know, core, you know, policy and theme elements for this element. And it really puts down on paper, I think, a lot of the objectives and goals that we've had as a city for a long time. Workforce development is probably the most critical one here. Our city has had a much higher, historically has had a much higher unemployment rate than the rest of the county. And we really believe that's really indicative of a, you know, not having, you know, not having the certain job skills that align with a lot of our businesses that we have in the area. So we put a lot of emphasis on workforce development to, you know, try to, you know, take it by the unemployment figure and help our businesses hopefully hire, you know, local people with the necessarily skill sets that our businesses need. So that that's a particular important effort and something we've been doing for a long time and continue to do. All right, so Ben, next slide, please. Again, and please anyway, jump in if we have questions on anything. So mobility element, that's sort of the new term of art. For years, it was known as the circulation element. And it was largely based on roads and how people would drive around town. This is one of the core, also core required elements in the general plan. But as you can sort of see here in this loop of, you know, wheel turning, there is a lot more to it than just cars. And, and a lot more to it than just buses. You know, it's cycling and walking, complete streets, complete streets are those that fairly accommodate all modes of travel, walking, biking, rolling, cars, transit, you name it. This is an area where we are, you know, somewhat deficient in some areas. And so as over time, as streets are rebuilt or reconstructed, we'll need to make sure that they include, you know, proper sidewalks, bike lanes, you know, things of that nature and not, at least in my view, not just for bike lanes, not just, you know, glorified gutters, but, you know, real bike lanes that people can use and feel safe on and with some protection from roadway travel. State legislation, a bill called S P seven forty-three that was passed probably twenty fourteen or fifteen, something of that ilk was a big one, and that's sort of in the, I guess, the, where it says revise LOS policy and V M T. That was a huge paradigm shift from where we have been. And your commission, as you see some projects come forward, is really going to be the first to really test this new paradigm of focusing on V M T, which stands for vehicle miles traveled versus solely relying on what we, what's called level of service, which is really a measure of how long somebody would sit at a light before they could go through the intersection. This is really a climate mitigation concept in disguise. Because the, why we concerned about vehicle miles traveled is really the tailpipe emissions from cars doing all those vehicle miles traveled. So vehicle miles traveled and by extension, the emissions that would come from that is now our threshold for environmental impact. It no longer is, David will sit at a, at a light for forty-five seconds instead of forty seconds. Or an LOS is graded on an A through F scale. A obviously being the best and F being the worst. There is no G, H, or I. So this is a recognition that for environmental impact state point of view, how long you might sit at an intersection in terms of time is not really the environmental impact. It's the emissions that come from your tailpipe that could be an impact. And in our city, almost sixty percent of our greenhouse gas emissions are from on-road vehicles. So this is a big deal, and I will be very honest, we're going to struggle with this in our community, at least over the short term. Because there doesn't appear to be, in short term, at least, a lot of ways to reduce V M T in a significant way. So this, this is going to be a big deal, and we, we are going to have probably quite a bit of discussion at the planning commission about that on projects going forward, especially new ones that we're evaluating now since this policy has been in place. So this, this is definitely going to be a biggie for us. I think it's a good thing, but at least short term, I think we will struggle with that now in the real world. So, any questions on that stuff? I know I'm kind of going a lot here, but this is also kind of fun. Okay, well, all right. So here's another fun one, too. This is a kind of a core part of the general plan. We need to make sure that we have the necessary infrastructure to support our growth. We are very much a growth community from a regional point of view. And so we, we clearly need to have adequate facilities and infrastructure. And this also sort of establishes certain thresholds that will, will need, for example, yeah, there's policies in there about response times for the fire department. And there are some policies in there about how many police officers we should have, you know, per X amount of population. So those really become thresholds so that, and we will review projects against those thresholds. Um, so those really become thresholds so that when, and we will review projects against those thresholds. Um, you know, when they come in, especially large projects. And so, um, you know, if you're going to do a project, you know, with. You know, fifteen hundred units and say three thousand people in it ultimately. Uh, and you have a policy in here that you want, you know, two police officers per thousand population. So that, what that means is this new three thousand, you know, person project is going to likely need to fund um. Getting two more, you know, two or three more police officers on the street. Things of that nature, uh, same thing with fire departments, um. Where fire stations are located relative to what the response area is very important. So they do can meet those response time goals. So this is another example of where a general plan is so much more beyond just development and growth. It really is that foundational thing really for everything in our city. Um, and it gets to all the, you know, the stuff that's not the most glamorous things like sewer pump stations and. All the pipes underground that we never see, but uh, when they go wrong, we, we feel it. But, you know, these things are all very important, um, and they're all the things that really keep the city and every city operating day to day. Um, and but we, you know, we tend to take them for granted, but they are critically important. Um, next slide please. So these are the overall themes in this element, um. Really addresses a lot of things, um. You know, you, you expect the things, you know, water sewer, things like that. I mentioned place fire. Um, but it gets into a lot of other matters, too, you know, we have certain um, policies for getting to school and library service. Um, broadband there, it was a big one that we added, recognizing. And obviously this was what, you know, well before everyone was zooming all the time, just how important broadband internet is. Um, in day-to-day life these days and also how uh, we have some equity issues. With broadband in our community. And, you know, if anything, broadband is even more critical now than ever, uh, as we all sit here on broadband connections. That are imperative um, to doing work and even fun things, you know, in this day and age. So this is all these overall themes and um. That all this, all this stuff really is all infrastructure. And it's not, infrastructure is not just pipes and roads, it's parks and schools and. Um, everything that we really need, you know, to make the city work, you know, day to day. Alright, Ben, next slide please. Alright, here's more one of the fun ones, our recreation element. This is another kind of largely required one, um. It really sets up the foundation for what we want to do as a city from a recreational standpoint, you know, holistically. It establishes how much park space we want to have, um, based on our population. Uh, sort of sets the policy for having a more interconnected, you know, park and trail, you know, network in our community. Um, getting access to the river and the ship channel, obviously very important for a city like ours, uh, for recreational um, standpoint. And the Parks Master Plan is really what now implements. These policy objectives, you know, in day-to-day life, and it's what the Parks Department. Uses to prepare their capital improvement program for new parks. And, and also retrofits and upgrades of existing parks. And this parks also aren't just the things, you know, with the baseball diamond on them, it's trails, it's open space. Um, it's the, uh, the boat launch at the, um, at the Broderick Boat Ramp. Um, and it's all of those things and plus more to come. Uh, we are currently deficient in our amount of park space based on our population. Uh, we do have a lot of catching up to do and that is um, occurring. Um, especially if we've got since in more recent years, we've taken a broader view of what a park is. It used to be that if it didn't have a, you know, a full-blown, fully improved baseball diamond on it. Or a soccer field with, you know, hard bounded goalposts and all that, it wasn't a park. And I think we've expanded our view of that and. You know, you'll see different more, a variety of parks, some of them just offering maybe perhaps more passive recreation. Um, in addition to those parks with the formal improvements for organized activities. So this is again, one of the fun ones, but also recreation is, uh, but to me at least a. A key part of any city in its day-to-day life for its residents, um. So, next slide please. Alright, here's another very important um, element. Um, in the old days, it was called open space element. Um, you can call these things anything you want. Uh, but they really, you know, this is really what it's all about is our natural resources in our community. Uh, we are very rich in natural resources and also cultural resources. Uh, we have, you know, historic buildings, uh, we have things that are locally significant to parts of our community. Um, and quite frankly, we have a lot of Native American influence and resources um, in our community. And that is, you know, very important. And this sort of goes over our objectives of how we hopefully can protect and enhance these resources. Um, balancing growth and conservation. Uh, because we are a growth community, but it doesn't mean that we can, you know, pave over everything. Um, but we have to strike that balance and that's not always, you know, not always easy to do. Uh, but in this element is particularly important, um, for. You know, we do have some wetlands in our community, we have some beautiful stands of trees. Uh, we have certain um, protected species in our community, uh, especially birds. And then of course, we're right next to the Yola bypass, so we have a lot of influence. Um, from all the natural activity in the bypass. And of course, in the river with fish and other species, pond turbles. Um, you name it, we actually have quite a bit of floor, you know, especially protected flora and fauna in our community. And this gets into, again, on a thirty thousand foot level. Um, how we're going to protect those areas while still achieving our other goals. Next slide, Ben, please. So these are the overall themes. Um, a big one that was sort of been added in this time around was really regarding the energy use component. Um, energy obviously has a direct tieback to our environment. And so that was really one of, you know, many of these things are fairly um. You know, common in these things and have been in there in general plans for a long time, but energy use has definitely. Become a, a much more of a front, front burner topic. Um, as we have grown and the region has grown and. Obviously, we've seen some challenges with energy um, in our community and neighboring communities. Um, even as recently as a couple of months ago, uh, where some folks did not have energy. So this is, you know, this is a, become an important um, facet in, you know, in this day and age. Alright, we're all getting there, we're more than halfway through. Safety element, obviously a core element, very important. And we are a community that is not without risks, uh, or potential risks um, to our community. Um, blood hazards obviously been a front burner issue for us for the last fifteen years. And will probably always be a front burner issue for us. Air quality has long been an issue in our community and in our region, and that will likely continue to be. Um, the big ads here are really climate change. Um, climate change wasn't really addressed very much in our prior general plans and. It's very much the front burner topic of all topics. Right now, especially since it has a relationship to all these other potential hazards. Uh, climate change may very well make some of these things worse. Than without it, so. Um, this, this element here, obviously very important. And is something that we definitely take seriously with all the potential hazards that our, our community is, um, you know, could be faced with. Um, you know, air quality, you know, another issue, um, public, related to public health. Uh, and that's a regional matter, too, so we have to be conscious of air quality in our regional net scale. Um, because, you know, the, you know, air pollutants don't stop at the city limit. Um, other places produce them, they come here, we produce them, they probably blow other places. So, you know, the key area, and we all know in our region how air quality can be challenging at times, particularly over the summer. And not to mention, you know, with wildfire smoke. So these are all, these are all very critical, you know, e- elements for a general plan and really establish sort of our long-term objectives. And how we're going to try to keep our community as safe as possible, you know, from environmental hazards. Next slide please, Ben. Alright, here's probably my favorite one that, that we added in the general plan this time, we call it healthy community. Um, I think this is really uh, where everyone is going, but. It really, in my view, ties all, much of everything else altogether. Um, in our community and really checks a lot of boxes in terms of our goals, you know, to be a healthy community. Um. So this is, you know, you know, so a lot of, you know, you can see the different themes on here. But the bottom line is, you know, health is seen as really this community-wide issue. Uh, and so having more connectivity, you know, equity, access to health, healthcare. Healthy foods, childcare, all of these things are really, you know, what. Any community really needs to be a thriving, you know, prosperous um, community. So this definitely gets into some of the more social elements of life. You know, some of these things are somewhat beyond the city's control in terms of like. Health insurance and things of that nature, but we really wanted to establish. That these are important objectives to the city and the city's going to do what it can. Um, to help enhance these kinds of topics. In order to make life better um, for our residents um, in our community. And I think it's well-known that we've had some connectivity challenges with our, way our city is sort of sliced and diced with freeways and railroads and. Ship channels, things of that nature. Um, and I think it's fair to say that we've had some equity issues or do have some equity issues in our community. And so, and I'll, I'll be coming back to equity here toward the end. But these are all important things from a healthy, you know, healthy community standpoint. Healthy people are happy people, productive people. And people that can contribute, you know, positively to their neighborhoods and to the city as a whole. So I was really proud of this one and, you know, we're excited to work on these aspects, you know, as time goes by. Next slide please. Alright, so we've, that, we've completed our journey through the current general plan. And so now when I just hit on a few um. Few next steps, um, especially things that will be coming before the planning commission, you know, later this year. Think as I mentioned, we've almost completed our housing element update and the planning commission. Uh, did complete its work on that last year. Um, I didn't, um, Commissioner Berliner was one of our uh. Subcommittee representatives to the city's housing commission at that time. And so, uh, certainly invite her to share anything about that process if she wishes. Um, for the benefit of the commission. Um, when I mentioned equity, that's this new environmental justice element. Um, there is a new state law. Uh, that requires us to have an environmental justice element. Um, I generally prefer the term environmental equity. And so that is something we're just really starting to roll up our sleeves on now. And we will be bringing that to the commission um, later this year. Um, we'll also be working on the circulation diagram that's in the general plan, you know, look, which really looks at sort of. Higher, not every neighborhood level street, but more your collectors and arterial streets. We'll need to be doing some updates on that, especially um, in the Pioneer Bluff and Bridge District areas. And then we'll need to be working, you know, it's all climate all the time, so we'll be working on some new resiliency policies. Um, in the general plan too, and. All of this, um, but for the housing element, we'll need to come through the planning commission. For a formal recommendation to the city council, um, you know, later this year, so. Um, planning commission will definitely be in the thick of this new general plan work um, this year. Um, which is. Kind of by design, because we put in a five-year update requirement in the general plan anyway, because. Um, that was going to time align with the housing element requirements. So we're well, well into our five-year review and it's proving with. Uh, how quickly things can change around us, even in, you know, five years, less than five years since the general plan was updated. Uh, various pieces of state legislation, you know, always come down the pike. And um, the housing element work, since everyone knows the housing element is on this mandatory timeframe. The legislature loves to um, attach other requirements that get triggered. When you have to do your housing element, so. Um, that's why, that's why now we're, excuse me, we're doing the environmental justice element and the resiliency policies. Circulation work is on us, and I've advocated for that because while we have the general plan open. Uh, we might as well try to, you know, update or remedy as many things as possible. Because even a minor change to the general plan is not easy. Right, next slide. So, um, this is sort of, you know, bringing it back to where the planning commission um, role really is with the general plan. On projects, um, I think as I stated toward the beginning of this um, presentation. Almost every project requires an analysis of its consistency or lack thereof with the general plan. And um, you will be seeing a project next month where in our estimation at the staff level. It is not consistent with numerous um, general plan policies. So that will be a big one for us at a future, future meeting. And then we will always provide you an analysis of the relevant policies. Um, not every single policy in the general plan is really relevant to every single project. Uh, but there's usually numerous ones that are. So we will always provide that to you as part of your staff report and. Um, ultimately, from almost every project that comes before you, you will need to find that it is indeed consistent with the general plan. And so rarely do we usually let something bubble all the way up to the planning commission. That is radically out of whack with the general plan. Um, because most projects try to align themselves with the general plan because they kind of have to if they want to be approved. Uh, but, you know, occasionally there's, you know, somebody wants to really try to have their day in court, so to speak, and. Planning commission next month will be the court. So, next slide please. Am I done, Ben? Yes. So that is a, as quick as I could do, a run through the city's general plan, which really is the foundation. For almost everything, you know, that we do as a city and here at the planning commission. So I'm, I'm glad we had an opportunity to do this tonight and it's a lot, I get it, um. Not, not expected to memorize anything, but. Hopefully over time, you would get be, just be aware of certain, you know, themes that are within the general plan. Um, so that when projects come before you, you can be thinking of those themes. You know, as they relate to a real-world project, you know, that you're considering at the planning commission. So that's the end of my remarks on that. I'd love to take any questions on it. I know it was a lot to digest. Um, but I really wanted to do this for the commission, especially since some interview are, are new to the commission and. Um, also you're going to be seeing a lot of general plan level stuff come before you later this year. So, thank you for indulging me on that, that was kind of fun.
Thank you for the presentation, that, can you, we can tell a lot of work went into that, David.
It was by a lot of work by a lot of people. I um, would normally would acknowledge many of those people, many of which have retired since then. Um, including our farmer director who also recently passed away. Uh, a lot of work went into that, it was definitely not just me and, um, you know. I, I took it over when we were, you know, on the ten-yard line and pushed it into the end zone. Um, but it remains something I'm very proud of and. Um, I do credit all people, including city council, planning commissions, a pass to. You know, worked on it, you know, with me and me for them.
Does anyone have any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Locker.
Um, thank you again. I mean, to condense the huge general plan into. An hour presentation, less than an hour presentation is commendable, and so thank you for making it succinct and easy to understand. I appreciate that greatly. Um, my question comes from some, and it stems from some of the public comment we got about the general. Um, my question comes from some, and it stems from some of the public comment we got about the general plan. And, you know, you talked about how we're a growth community. And now we're facing this challenge where we have housing near industrial areas. And, and so can you speak to a little bit about, you know, the mitigations that the city can ask in order to to make a peaceful coexistence between housing and industry?
Yes, um, the comment, public comment we received tonight was um really related to a more acute matter that's happening that is, you know, is going to be coming before the planning commission next month in a formal hearing setting. So I don't want to get into the specifics of it outside of that hearing. But in in general terms, uh land use compatibility is sort of the fundamental aspect of what planning and zoning is. Nobody wants a rendering plant next door to their house. Uh, but that goes both ways. If there's a rendering plant already there, we probably shouldn't put housing right around it. Or a nuclear power plant, or, you know, whatever noxious thing, you know, you can think of. So, you know, distance is one of the fundamental ones. Um, you'll see things like, you know, sound walls, uh landscape buffers. You can put um better sound insulating windows, you know, into homes. Um, there's a whole suite of things that can be done. And so we try to build that stuff in upfront to try to avoid problems. Uh, we are not always successful, you know, with that. Um, I'll be the first to admit that. And so we are grappling with a a matter out near Bridgewater Island and Southport Business Park, you know, right now, and we are kind of grappling with um decisions that were made, you know, twenty-five and thirty years ago that are still um pending, if you will, you know, today. And we certainly would do things a little differently now than we would have maybe back in nineteen ninety-five, you know, as an example. But in that matter, we are sort of hamstrung, if you will, by, you know, various decisions that were made in the past that were probably good decisions and well-intentioned decisions then. Um, but, you know, with the, you know, the ability of hindsight now, recognize we might do things, you know, a little different. So you're gonna hear all that in the real-world perspective, front and center um next month. So that the, you know, land use compatibility really was why zoning, you know, was really invented, you know, in the first place. Um, but I think in my business as a planner and, you know, being into zoning and my predecessors, you know, over the last hundred years, you know, the pendulum probably swung a little too far away because they would zone things in a way for these types of reasons. But they would put all the commercial way over here, all the, all the residential way over here. And then it forced everyone to have to drive to everything. And we took away the most wonderful things that used to exist in cities where somebody would have a shop on the ground floor and they would live up top. Um, you know, that this notion of mixed use is not new. We're actually trying to get back to a lot of things where that used to be the norm in cities. But, you know, land use compatibility is, can be elusive and you know, and then neighborhoods change over time and 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 people perceive some of those impacts differently. It's not a blanket thing. Noise is a huge best example. You know, some people are really bothered by noise, some people not so much. Um, but we still want to have, you know, healthy neighborhoods where people have a good life and enjoy things and raise their families and all that. And so we have to be mindful of that. Um, but we recognize as much as we want to have those healthy residential neighborhoods, we also want to have, you know, healthy um commercial areas, employment and sales tax, things like that. So it is a balancing act. Um, so, but we're gonna hear all about that um in great detail in about a month. So stay tuned.
Thank you. Commissioner Hirsch.
Thanks, Teresa Blon. And um, you know, I want to echo Commissioner Lockhart. Thank you, Mr. Tilly, for the presentation. You know, I found it really informative. Um, a lot to present. Um, and you and your staff have done a great job. You've given me hard copies too. I'm still reading through them, but just really appreciate everything you're sending my way. So there's a comment and a question, comment. I love the healthy community element. Like you said, I think it's great. There's a focus on the connectivity and the equity in particular. And then just a question about the mobility element. You mentioned in your description of it how the revised level of service policy, reducing the V M T um might be a big deal and a struggle for our community in the short term. If you could maybe elaborate a little bit more about that?
Of course, yeah. Um, V M T or vehicle miles traveled, you know, is sort of the you know, the the new kid on the block, so to speak, uh because if it's direct relationship to emissions from tailpipes and for um not only climate change, but just, you know, criteria pollutants, you know, in the air. Um, so the name of the game nowadays from an environmental impact standpoint is projects need to be at fifteen percent or below the regional average of V M T for that land use type. So, um, so residential might be treated differently than commercial, you know, for example. But if you're gonna do a housing project, you know, say, you know, five hundred houses, you know, for a, for um example. Um, regionally, that that housing project, you know, is assumed to add a certain amount of V M T. Um, and so now the threshold, and this is, this is baked in the law, it wasn't something that we just dreamed up, is the now new environmental threshold is um, you must be at least fifteen percent below that regional average figure. Um, and so if you are, you know, at eighty-five percent or less, or more, excuse me, or less of regional average, you're good. If you're over that, then we need to figure out ways to reduce V M T, which is much easier said than done. In Southport, for example, some areas are in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty percent of regional average. So we needed to, we, and you know, in theory, we need to try to get from a hundred and twenty percent of regional average all the way down to eighty-five percent of regional average. That is a lot of V M T to reduce. And right now, while transit is sort of going through this evolution, you know, if you will, transit seems to be shrinking its footprint rather than growing. And at least, you know, using Southport again as an example, there's not a lot of employment in Southport that really aligns with at least employment with the wages that align with the housing prices in Southport. So that further exacerbates V M T because many people that live in Southport need to leave Southport and go to work, you know, somewhere else. Uh, maybe not so much lately because of a lot of the teleworking, but um, overall, uh, at least prior to pandemic, we, West Sacramento exports ninety percent of its white-collar workers to other places. So that's all V M T and emissions. And we don't really have a great way, so far at least, to really reduce V M T in a meaningful way. Um, and we can't just require people to ride a bike or walk. Just doesn't work that way. Um, and transit again is sort of seems to be shrinking a little bit. There's barely any transit service in Southport, you know, for example, right now. Uh, we have Via and that's wonderful. But, you know, Via doesn't take you to downtown or to Roseville or wherever people work. Uh, it's why we're trying to do a lot of active transportation investments in our community to make it more feasible for people to bike and walk. Um, but it's, you know, that's a challenge for most folks to ride a bike, you know, in your work clothes, work every day, you know, especially when it's a hundred and five outside. Or there's a lot of wildfire smoke, or it's super cold raining. So, so that's why I'm getting at is, you know, we're we're high on the V M T side, but we're low on our, at least in short-term abilities to reduce, you know, V M T. So that's where we have that disconnect. And that's why I say we're gonna struggle a little bit with it, at least over the short term. Because there are no real um silver bullets, you know, toward V M T. Southport was envisioned when Southport first started to get um planned out and ultimately developed, which we went back sort of the early to mid nineteen nineties. It was really, you know, visualized and set up to be this um really largely self-contained, you know, community with all the schools, all the commercial parks and employment, in addition to housing, under the, you know, theme that for the most part, people could live and do everything they need to do in their day-to-day lives without even leaving Southport. Well, the reality is it hasn't quite panned out that well. Um, you know, there's, there's not a lot of employment in Southport, um, especially again with the wages that line at least our current, you know, housing prices, which we all know are astronomical right now. And so that means we also end up importing a lot of employees that live elsewhere to go work in Southport Business Park and other parts of Southport. So that's even more V M T coming in while many other residents are leaving town to go to work somewhere else, which is even more V M T. So we do have a conundrum there. And it's not going to uh put the brakes, you know, on everything. But it is something we're gonna have to grapple with a little bit, especially in this era of where climate change is front and center. And emissions from vehicles are almost sixty percent of the total emissions high. So I hope everyone can see where we're gonna have to grapple with this a little bit um as projects still come. But despite all this, um, we have an obligation to, over the state, to plan for ninety-four hundred units in the next eight years by twenty twenty-nine. So you can see how some of these things are all well-intentioned. But once we all boil them down and have to, you know, look at projects and make decisions in the real world, it's gonna be hard. And of course, we all know that, you know, we need more housing as a rule, you know, in the, in the region. Uh, but we need to do it the right way too. And so, um, so that's where this, that's where the intersect is gonna come um for the planning commission when projects come for you.
Well, thank you for sharing. That helps, you know, visualize the challenge. So
It is, yeah.
Looking forward to you helping us grapple with it.
Yep. And it's not just a challenge for us either. By all means, we're probably in better shape than most communities, but we're still in, gonna struggle.
Commissioner Escavell and Batman.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and Batman.
And Batman, yes, he's uh here next to me. Um, thank you again for the presentation and I get really excited looking at the general plan and the direction that the city's trying to move in, especially the focus on the priorities. And um, one of the, one of the things that you brought up and you said you would talk about a little bit more is the community, the community equity. So I'm just curious if you could just explain a little bit more about what that means.
Yes, so we are, you know, getting going now on a whole environmental equity element for our general plan. Um, there are policies in that vein, you know, in the general plan already, but uh we're gonna put a lot finer point on it. Um, in my view, equity should be the lens by which we look at everything, you know, going forward. Um, equity, equity in my mind is also not the same as equality. Uh, an example, I I did a presentation on climate um yesterday to a regional group. And the example I gave to help explain that uh was say, we gave everybody in our city a brand-new, state-of-the-art air conditioning unit for free. Everybody. That's, if we gave it to everyone, that's kind of equality. But if people already, um, even though if they got the air conditioning unit for free, if they can't afford to run it when it's hot, then that's not equitable. So it's, it's more than just giving everybody a free air conditioning unit or or um, you know, what whatever you can think of. It's, you know, equity is, could they even make use of it, even if they were given to it for free? And then equity has a direct relationship back to climate. Uh, and using the air conditioning example already, we already know how hot it gets around here. And it's likely to get hotter over time. So folks today who may struggle to have a, you know, three or four hundred dollar P G N E bill in the summer, it's things that likely only to get worse for them. Um, even people with some means still, I think, try to not run the air conditioning as as much as possible to keep the P G N E bill, you know, bearable. Um, I know I do that. Um, so we will need to be looking at equity as sort of a foundational um plank going forward. And I'm trying desperately not to get ahead of our city council here. But equity was also a primary plank in the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, which wrapped up last summer, which is now forming the basis for our climate action plan, which we'll be also bringing to the planning commission, you know, later this year. So um, there's a great illustration. I wish I had it here in front of me, but it's it's three little kids um looking over the fence into the baseball stadium. And on the left, it has an equality sign where um everybody has the same, you know, the same little box to stand on, but only one of them can actually see over the fence into the game. Whereas on the right-hand side, which is called equity, everybody can see over the fence, but maybe two of them have maybe a little bigger box. So they can, you know, see over the fence. So it's a great illustration. I'll I'll um email it out to everyone to help explain this. But equity is a huge issue. Uh, I, you know, I'm, I'm gonna try not to get on my soapbox here too much. Um, but it's really, you know, relates back to the climate work we're doing too, because we keep the two are inter, you know, completely intertwined in my mind. So we don't have all the answers on it yet, but I believe this will be a big push forward for us. And it's not that we're a hundred percent, you know, unequitable, if that's a word right now, but we could be a lot more equitable still too. And, you know, that could come in a lot of different forms. But I'm excited to work on it. Um, you know, I really want to work on those matters so much of our eyes, I feel like have been open to so, open to so many things, even just in the last year. Things that were right in front of us, you know, all the time. And at least that's how I feel just for my own, it's like, I feel almost like the Matrix, you know, the blue pill, the red pill, um, you know, of late. And so we will work on this and I'm excited about it and I'm looking forward to bringing some of that stuff to the commission.
Thank you very much. And and that picture that you're describing is one that we use very much in the education advocacy world. Um, so I I know which one you're referring to. And um, I'm excited to, it's a great illustration.
It's the best one I've found that, you know, graphically, you know, explains the difference between equality and equity. And um, so that's, I'll be, you know, I'll be using that through our work too as a way to help illustrate these things. Uh, it's very important and I'll get on my soapbox for just one little second. It's also the right thing to, now off my soapbox.
Well, thank you very much.
So related to Commissioner Escavell's question, so is the equity element underway right now?
Yeah, we're just, we're really, we we really now are starting to get, roll up our sleeves on that. Uh, we really had to finish the housing element first because that had that hard and fast, you know, deadline on it. But um, the bill, if you want to Google it, was S B one thousand. It's easy to, easy to remember. Um, that sort of spells out the parameters, at least, you know, sort of from the legislative standpoint. Um, it's still fairly new. Not many communities have completed that work yet. So what it means in the real world is still, you know, it needs to be defined a little better. But um, that is important work and we're getting going on it now. And um, I'm really excited to see what comes of it and what it will mean for our city decision-making and our community. Um, we definitely have opportunities to improve on that. And I, for one, am excited about trying to help improve, you know, some of those things in our community. You know, we're, we're not terrible, but we could be better too.
It, um, with that, is there gonna be the same or more community involvement as there was with the housing element?
There's gonna have, there's gonna have to be. I mean, we, we can't, we can't do it in a vacuum. And I really am looking forward And I really am looking forward to a lot of community input and we're trying everything we can possibly think of to make sure we're reaching as much of the community as we possibly can. Uh, especially those communities that are typically overlooked, either, you know, intentionally or unintentionally, or, um, just don't have that voice, you know, that some other parts of our community have. It is a challenge. We're a very diverse community. I think the school district rep has something like forty or fifty different languages, you know, that people speak in our community. And so I don't know that I can get all of those languages, but I'm gonna get as many, you know, as many as I can. But also, you know, different age groups, um, you know, different neighborhoods in town. You know, men and women, you know, kids, um, you know, everything out there is, you know, who we want to get to and hear from. And it's not easy to do. Um, even in this relatively small city like ours. Uh, but we, we still gotta do it and, um, we're doing a climate workshop, um, next Tuesday night, which is sort of focused on a lot of those matters, but from a climate standpoint. And, um, it's sort of was really are gonna be a kind of an experiment for us about some of our outreach techniques. And, you know, who are we getting? It's also gonna be a, a plug here for climate. We're also gonna see a survey go out citywide here pretty soon. And one of the things that we're gonna ask people right off the bat is what neighborhood do you live in? Because I want to know what neighborhoods we're reaching, but I also really want to know what neighborhoods we are not reaching. So that's the purpose, um, behind that. Uh, because that hopefully that will help us focus some of our outreach efforts if we're really missing, you know, some parts of our community for whatever reason. So I'm excited to get going on this. My whole team is working on it, you know, one way or the other, as well as, uh, our consultant team and others. So, um, I'm now the housing element is very close to being in the can. I'm looking forward to rolling up the sleeves on this.
Commissioner Escavell, was your hand raised again or is it still up from?
Sorry, I forgot to take that down. Thank you.
I did have one more question related to the urban structure and design element. So when we're doing a design review, how much discretion does the commission have with that? Are we confined it to mass and all, all the F A R requirements and zoning code?
Our, our design review was, was really tried to set up to try to make something that is inherently subjective as objective as possible. So it was originally set up to be at the staff level and areas where we have adopted design guidelines. We would review projects against those design guidelines and it was thought it could be almost like a checklist kind of thing. Hasn't quite proven to be that way very much in the real world because some of our design guidelines are maybe a little out of date or um, they were deliberately left, um, broadly to give people more, you know, sort of freedom. But the court, the flip side of that is it makes it more challenging to evaluate them against what criteria. So really what you have when now that most design review will be coming before the planning commission is part of a larger project. It's really about what does, what are the design guidelines that are applicable um, in that given neighborhood. So we have design guidelines in Washington. We have them in the bridge district, along West Capitol, up in the rivers and then broadly in Southport. Um, so we've, it's always that push and pull of being too loose or too restrictive. And so, um, but we've learned, you know, too many people have been through design review Hades and other places where everyone just throws out their opinions and they're all probably valued opinions, but, you know, if you get, you know, seven different opinions on one building, what are you gonna do? So we've tried at least to make that not overly prescriptive, but also not so vague that we have no guidance whatsoever. You know, I really, you know, and having that urban design element really is what sort of gives us that policy framework to develop design guidelines that are appropriate, you know, for a given neighborhood or area. Because, you know, we certainly don't want everything to be you hundred percent uniform across the entire city. Um, that's just not where we want to go and our city is, you know, pretty diverse in that respect from a, you know, built building standpoint. You know, we'd like to enhance that, but still from a general plan level, raise the bar of the citywide with projects as they come. But the details are left to those individual area design guidelines and then what we bring forth to the commission. But that's an excellent question. I see you have quite a bit of leeway. But we can't just make it up and make somebody build just what we want, you know? You know, if you say, you know, make it blue, Commissioner Hurst says make it yellow and then red and then green. That's not where we want to be because we'll just be going nowhere fast. The key is the design guidelines.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands up. So thank you again for the presentation.
Well, this, this was fun. Um, again, I, I could have, we could have done this all day and all night. Now I would have even more fun, but I know it's getting late and we want to talk about, um, my second law, which is zoning. So I'd like to tee that over to Seamus. He was really the lead person on our update that we did coming off the general plan. So I'd like for him to give you a sort of a similar level, um, presentation on our zoning code. And, um, hit the highlights of it for you, especially the types of zoning matters that typically might bubble up to the planning commission. And, you know, less of the day-to-day things that we deal with, with building permits and stuff like that. So Seamus, please take it away.
Sorry, one thing before, before we turn to item four, I just wanted to note that we did receive public comments on item three and we all received those in our email and thank you.
Stay tuned on that one.
Yeah, okay. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, Mr. Laffey.
Yes. Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. So, um, to go off of, uh, David's presentation, the zoning code, which is codified as Title seventeen of the, of the municipal code, implements a general plan and, uh, overall vision of what the community and decision-makers want the city to look like. It, uh, guides the growth of the built environment and, um, really what properties are to be used for. So overall, it really, it's meant, meant to promote and protect the, uh, health, safety and general welfare of the community. Um, so as David mentioned, the current code, um, current zoning code was adopted in the spring of twenty nineteen. Took a few years to develop the current code. Um, lots of commission meetings and city council meetings and we got this fully updated code. Um, previous to this code, we had a, a code that was originally, um, the old county code when the city incorporated, uh, and it was incrementally updated. So it was, um, not nearly as clear concise as this current code. And the organization wasn't quite there. So, um, our current code, um, and all, all zoning codes really, um, at a very, you know, high level, are based on zones. So the, as part of the general plan approval in twenty sixteen, there was a land use map that was approved and a zoning map that was approved. And the entire city is mapped out in the different zones. Um, residential, industrial, commercial, open space, parks and recreation, all, all of that. Um, and there's a zoning map included in your agenda report. Um, I should also, also mention that zoning code updates are typically initiated either by the city council or city manager or a, an applicant such as the couple of meetings ago, uh, clean energy, um, requested a zone text amendment. So for, for, for land uses and zoning, um, at the very end of the zoning code, there's a master land use matrix. And it identifies what uses are allowed in each zone. So it's basically, it's a huge table. And it identifies what you can do in each zone. So the general plan is general, it might say, you know, this is commercial or this is industrial. But what, what does that actually mean? When you get down to specific types of uses, you know, like a, a medical office or a a cannabis dispensary or something like that, you know, what, what, where are those allowed or if, are they allowed at all? So that would be in the, the master land use matrix. It's also in, um, division two of the zoning code. Um, so our, our zoning code, uh, is divided up into five different, uh, divisions. And the first one is introductory, introductory provisions. Um, and it, that's exactly what it is. It's, you know, what is the zoning code? Um, if there are any kind of conflicts, rules of measurement, it's in there. Um, and then the zone regulations, um, division two, that gets into what are the specific development standards um, and regulations for each type of zone. So, um, it's based off, you have, you know, agricultural, residential, commercial, mixed-use employment, which is really uh, industrial and commercial, and then the public and semi-public zones. Um, and in those you have your, your setback requirements and your open space requirements, uh, F A R, which is four area ratio. Um, really kind of the basic building blocks of what you can do on a property, um, where you can put a building, how big can the building be? Um, overall mass and basic stuff like that. Um, those are in the development standards and land use regulations. So, um, a lot of those are, we, um, in the community development department, we get hundreds of building permits a month. So we review these building permits just to make sure they're meeting the basic requirements, uh, in terms of setbacks. Um, height, uh, F A R, open space, stuff like that. And then we also have additional supplemental regulations, which are really more design, uh, and form-based. Um, that's pretty new for our, our code. We didn't have that in the old code. So you'll notice that we have supplemental regulations, um, and that gets more into the design. Let's see here, moving on, um, so really, um, go into division three, um, citywide regulations. That's where you get into a lot more of the specific types of, uh, things like, um, like, uh, fencing and, um, lighting, you know, how, how high can your fence be in the front yard? Visibility at intersections, you know, this is like, if you, you're probably well aware of and you're trying to get out of a parking lot and you can't see if any traffic is coming your way, that's, we have requirements on visibility at intersections, you know, dimensioned out. So you can't put a, you know, a tall sign or a big shrub or whatever in your, your visibility triangle. So you can see the zoning code gets really detailed on stuff like that. Um, it really implements the overall vision of the general plan, but it's a lot more detailed. There's also stuff in there, um, just, you know, scrolling through all the on refuse enclosures, you know, what are the, what are the design requirements for refuse, most likely enclosure for commercial property? Um, we, it also, the zoning code references other documents like our landscape development guidelines um, and our plan development overlays. And specific plans. So we reference those out. And then we also have parking requirements. That's another big section that we, we check. Parking requirements are a big one. So I'm going through, going through the highlights here. If you had any specific questions at the end, you know, getting more detailed on, on these specific topics, I'm glad to go into those. Another big thing here is performance standards. So I know the last item, uh, the topic of, of like noise and, uh, um, air quality came up, but we have performance standards in the zoning code. For, for, for noise and glare and vibration. We have a, a signage section for, um, regulating the, the types of signs that are allowed and how big they can be and where they can be. Um, and those are checked, uh, we call over the counter. So if somebody a business wants to put a sign in, they'll come into the building counter and we'll check to make sure they're meeting the overall requirements. Um, you know, we, when the, the first, the city first incorporated, there were huge billboards along West Capital Avenue. There were signs that were like a hundred feet tall. So um, when you don't have signage requirements, it's just turns into a, a war of who can have the biggest sign and tallest sign and it gets out of control. So, um, we have signage requirements in there. There's the standards for specific, uh, uses. Chapter seventeen dot three zero gets into um, accessory dwelling units. That's a, a big one that's come up in the last few years on, for state requirements. Uh, and actually it's a pretty big deal now is, um, all residential zones can have, uh, an accessory dwelling unit and also a junior accessory dwelling unit. So essentially, um, you could have three, you know, three dwelling units on a single-family property. That's a state law. So, um, you know, we, we, we call it single-family zoning, but you can have more than one unit. Um, we have, uh, animal keeping standards in there. You know, how many, how many chickens and goats and cows can you have on a property? And, you know, this is all stuff that really, we don't really, uh, have permits for. It's more, um, if it becomes a problem, the code enforcement, you get code enforcement complaints, say if somebody is, is neglecting their animals, they have way too many animals, that's creating, you know, piles of manure or you know, smell issues. That's where this kind of stuff can come up. So really the, the zoning codes about, you know, we're all living in a city and how can we all live together the most harmoniously and get along? And if somebody has a, you know, a bunch of smelly animals and a bunch of beehives right next to you or, you know, they're playing loud music and ill and night or whatever. That's, you know, that's zoning code would, uh, come into play there. Um, so we also have, um, uh, cannabis regulations. That was a big one four or five years ago. Um, the city does not currently allow any retail dispensaries, um, but we, um, could allow, um, like, uh, cannabis growing or distribution or testing and manufacturing. Um, and that requires a conditional use permit as well as a development agreement. So that rolls into my next section here is what really comes before the planning commission. So, um, a lot of the smaller stuff we check. At the, at plan check, um, and that's when a, anything's permitted by right. Let's just say somebody wants to build a new, a new, um, a new restaurant. And if it's permitted by right in the mixed-use neighborhood commercial zone, um, they would submit their building permit plan straight to the building division and, um, it would not be, it would not come before the planning commission. We would plan, check it against all its standards in the zoning code. But if, say, um, we had a cannabis company that wants to do, uh, cultivation, that requires a conditional use permit. So that requires planning commission approval. And we have a whole section in the zoning code about, uh, conditional use permits. So, um, getting back to the zoning matrix, we have permitted uses, uses that are conditional, um, which are either minor or require planning commission approval and a minor is the zoning administrator, which is David, or they're not permitted at all. So the conditional use permit is, it's in the middle. Other items that could come before the planning commission or development agreements, um, and that's, those are required for, um, cannabis, but they're also, they're before cannabis, they were really more meant as a way for, for developers to get, um, assurances. And, um, so you'll, you'll typically see them on larger development projects. And let's see, other things that can come before the planning commission, David mentioned them is design review, um, any kind of project that will come before the planning commission that also has designer view, designer view gets bundled in. Um, you'll see, uh, subdivision maps, but those are in a different section of the zoning from the, the municipal code. So there's a lot, lot in the zoning code. I could, like David talked about this all night, but I want to leave their opportunity for planning commission to ask any questions about anything that if, that they have any questions. So I'll, um, conclude my, uh, report on the zoning code and, uh, leave it open for, for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Laffey for the succinct and broad overview. Lot to digest in the zoning code. So thank you for the overview. Uh, do the commissioners have any questions? The Commissioner Hirsch.
Thanks, Sarah Sablon. And yeah, Mr. Laffey, thank you for the overview. I'm, I'm still reading through the zoning code, but it, it's a lot of fun. I, I think to read through, it's a lot of interesting details. You know, I was just looking at the beehive section when you were talking about beehives for, for instance. So really fascinating document. Um, I'm looking forward to doing a deeper dive in. I, I, I had one question, um, that's back to the role of the planning commission that you mentioned. When it comes to conditional use permits or variances or reviewing developer agreements. And I saw in the zoning ordinance, the planning commission also has the role of hearing and deciding. And I saw in the zoning ordinance, the planning commission also has the role of hearing and deciding appeals from decisions by the zoning administrator. If you could elaborate a little bit about that particular aspect.
Yeah. So like I mentioned, we have conditional use permits. And what we, this, we now have a minor use permit, which only requires zoning administrator approval. And that's meant for really more minor things that we were taking the planning commission, but really I, we, we thought could be done more administratively. And if, if those get appealed, they would go to the planning commission. And examples of things that might require a minor use permit. In your, in the land use matrix, you'll see an M and that, that means it's a use that requires a minor use permit. But we also have other actions that would require zoning administrator approval, like. A lot line adjustment or a merger. Say if somebody wants to move the property line in between their, in between two properties. Or if they want to merge two properties together, that would require zoning administrator approval. We've, we, we have quite a few of those requests that come in over the course of a year. So. That those were made. Administrative or the zoning administrator could act, could act on them.
And I could add on that a little bit as the zoning administrator, one of the hats I wear. At any time, I feel like his own administrator item. You know, could bear, could be contentious or otherwise have great interest. I have the ability to kick it up to the planning commission and let the planning commission make that decision. You know, that would be ultimately be a city manager called, you know, to do that, but there certainly have been times over the years where that's warranted. And Commissioner Hirsch, you're sort of foreshadowing things about the appeal of zoning administrator. Because you guys will be hearing an appeal of a zoning administrator decision in a month. So you're going to get to do that in real life here real soon, which is unusual. We typically maybe have, you know, one appeal a year, maybe on average. So they're, they're not common, but you're going to get to do that soon. And. That's definitely a different animal than in an appeal format than for all the things that, you know, we typically do. But, you know, overall here, the goal, much like with the general plan, the goal was to at least get some of the larger themes in the zoning code. Out, you know, for the planning commission, you know, consideration. And we tried to focus on a lot of those things that. Really will be before the planning commission. You know, the nuts and bolts stuff was good for, you know, Seamus to go over. And that's the stuff, you know, we do day to day. And that largely won't bubble up to the planning commission. But, you know, I have found over the years that planning commissioners are often asked questions by neighbors or whatever about. Things like parking or fencing or this or that. And so it's just good to be generally aware of the kinds of topics that might be in the zoning code. And then, so you can say, yeah, you know, I think there's something about zoning and zoning about fencing. So. You know, hey, I might want to get ahold of Seamus and he can, you know, matter of fact, it already happened already. Mr. Steiger got a. An inquiry from one of his neighbors about fencing, I think it was. And so. He relayed that to me and I asked him to relay my contact information to that person. And so that, that happens a lot. So. You know, someone's bound to ask you about parking or trees or whatever. And so. It's just good to over time, at least have some familiarity with some of the topics, you know, that are in the zoning code. I'm never expecting you to recite it or interpret it, you know, for anyone. But speaking of interpretations, that is something that I do sometimes, and or sometimes I will ask you guys to interpret the zoning code on a given matter. Because as much as tries our best to make everything as clear as possible. You know, we don't always get all the way in, and then new things come up. We don't have every particular land use type under the sun identified, you know, in the matrix. And new things evolve much faster than we, our zoning code can ever evolve. So occasionally we may need to ask you to interpret some part of the zoning code. As it applies to a real world proposition. So these things do matter. They're not frequent, but they do, they do come up and they will come to the planning commission, you know, at least a couple of times a year.
Commissioner Steger. It's sorry. So is it Steger or Steiger?
It is, it is pronounced Steger. I guess a lot. So I.
Okay.
I'm not overly sensitive. So, but it is.
I think the first meeting I said Stegler. So I apologize for that.
Anything close, I'll answer to. Thank you, Chair Sablon. And to echo my fellow commissioners, Mr. Tilly and Mr. Laffey, thank you very much for your presentations tonight. It's been really helpful. And kind of again, back to the public comments and, and. Touching on the projects that aren't necessarily put forth in front of the commissioner, right? That, that kind of align with the, the zoning laws. Do you find it beneficial for the commissioners to somehow remain somewhat aware of the projects that. Again, don't come before the commission that are, that are, that come through the city and are approved. And similar to, to some of the, the projects that were identified in at least one or, or more of the, the comments that came in tonight.
Well, it's certainly your prerogative to, you know, be as in tune with everything as you, your time allows. Zoning administrator matters that typically don't come with a planning condition, you know, are publicly noticed. And they are on our website under, I think it's called, what do we call it? James pending administrative actions. I think that's the terminology on the website. So that, you know, that stuff is on there and. As, as Seamus mentioned, those things that are under that category are typically very benign. Get little to no fanfare, you know, whatsoever. But there is the occasional odd duck that does, and that's why you're going to be hearing it next month. That's very unusual though, fortunately. Typically when we mail out a zoning administrator notice, you know, to fifty or sixty surrounding property owners. Typically we won't hear a thing from anyone. And so, and the whole land use matrix, it's all a judgment call as to what goes and what category of. Permitted, not permitted, conditionally permitted or zoning administrator. So, and there's no perfect way to do all of that. So. That's why I always sort of have that eject button in my back pocket as the zoning administrator. You know, if I feel like something would benefit from a broader public discussion before the planning commission. You know, rather than just me. But even the minor use permits, just like the full blown use permits that we bring before the planning commission. Have certain findings that have to be made and there needs to be evidence. You know, of those findings or lack thereof on the other side of the coin. So a zoning administrator approval is by no means a, a rubber stamp. Or anything like that. And they are publicly noticed. We mail, just like we mail on hearings that come before the planning commission. So we try to strike that balance of. Not being too loosey goosey on things and let just anything happen, but not being so restrictive that we can't do anything. So it's, it's always that balancing act. And when we update the zoning code, we may shift some of those things into different columns. You know, based on, you know, experience of, you know, if this particular land use has required a use permit, but. You know, it seems like they're pretty routine for the planning commission, you know, maybe we slide that over to zoning administrator category. And conversely, if something in the zoning administrator category is continually being maybe problematic, maybe we'll slide that into the full blown use permit category. And then that would come before the planning commission, you know, in that larger, you know, setting. So it's, it's a balancing act. I feel like we're in pretty good shape. We could always tinker with that matrix to death. But we're trying to find a balance of efficiency, certainty, but still allowing for public input and involvement. On projects, you know, in the community. So it's, it is a balancing act between, you know, being too strict and too loose. And so I tend to be kind of conservative on these matters. So. I'd rather bring more stuff before the planning condition than less, but it is, that balance is there and. You know, the zoning administrator is not new and it's, every city has one. But we have slid a little more into the zoning administrator category over time. Cause it is a little more efficient for our applicants, a little less costly and timely. But it doesn't mean that they can, you know, get away with murder, you know, either. And I'm bound to kick something up to the planning commission on a zoning administrator item one of these days. Because it would just benefit from that public process.
To add what David said, we also have a major planning projects page. So if you wanted to. Familiarize yourself with any of the major projects in the city that have been going on for a few years already. You can go to the major planning projects page and that's on the community development department page of the city website.
Of course, my reminder on all this is, you know, when people, if you become, people approach you about projects, that becomes your ex parte communication. That, you know, you obviously have to eventually disclose when something, you know, does come before the planning commission. But again, I think what I've told all of you in our individual meetings, there's, there's nothing wrong with ex parte communication in and of itself. You just need to dispose the, the nature of it at the meeting and then we move on.
So I, I'm not seeing any other hands up. I did have a one question for Mr. Laffey. You've mentioned code enforcement and so how many enforcement staff do we have? And, and do those matters ever come before the planning commission?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think we have three code enforcement officers. We used to have four. I think we have three now and a code enforcement manager. And they, they're really busy. They, we get constantly, you know, get complaints from, you know, neighbors and city residents. And if, if, if somebody, if, if. Somebody wants to appeal a code enforcement decision. That would come before, David, do you want to jump in right?
No, it's the administrative hearing officer would adjudicate those. Yeah, code enforcement probably gets a couple thousand cases a year. Yeah, I think it would be a pretty rare circumstance where a code enforcement matter would make it to the way to the planning commission. Unless some form of entitlement is the remedy. Or whatever the code enforcement issue is. It's come up in the past where somebody has built a fence that was too tall and they tried to seek a variance. And so that would come to the planning commission. And, you know, if they got the variance, that would make the code enforcement, you know, case, you know, go away as an example. That's been pretty rare, but our, our code enforcement people are busy nonstop. And the zoning code is only sort of one aspect of the city's municipal code that they enforce. They have the entire title nineteen, which is called the nuisance abatement code. And that's what they use as their authority for graffiti, substandard housing, you know, junk cars. You know, things of that nature, especially a lot of health and safety matters. But they also help us with signage. You know, certain landscape issues. Our code enforcement staff are really the, you know, unsung heroes in many ways. Because nobody ever calls them up just to say, hey, everything's just going great in the neighborhood. I wanted to let you know. And no matter who they talk to, either the person who's complaining is not happy about something. Or the person who's allegedly doing something wrong is definitely not going to be happy. And they really try hard to resolve things, you know, amicably and get voluntary compliance. Which can be kind of painstaking and, and we can, it can never happen as fast as everybody would want. But they do, they, they are our arms and eyes out in the field. And we help them a lot with their cases because much of which they do go enforce is ours, that those day to day matters in the zoning code of. Parking or setbacks or, you know, all those nuts and bolts stuff. So they are an important aspect in the community, especially on substandard housing matters. They respond to that right away. If, you know, rental properties don't have heat or if they have pest problems. You know, all kinds of things. And they, they definitely see some pretty nasty stuff out there sometimes. You know, when they get in some places and I've seen some photographs of things that I don't even want to describe because they're just awful, but. They take that stuff especially seriously when there's health and safety matters involved and. But somehow they find time to help us with some of our zoning code work too. And. And we try to, we try to write the zoning code to actually help them with their work. Who are the people, you know, out in the field, you know, dealing with real residents and businesses who are often not entirely happy to see them show up.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you both again for both of your presentations. I think that was really helpful to have an overview of both of those.
I, I, I'm glad the commission appreciated this. You know, oftentimes we're so busy, we just don't have a time to dedicate a night like this. And I, I feel for all of you who are put up there. And thrown right into the deep end, you know, kind of right out of the chute with, you know, not as much training as I would love to have for all of you. So. We do want to try to work these kinds of things in when we can. And with the goal of developing some familiarity with them, you know, as time, you know, goes by. And so when you see more things in staff reports, they'll make more sense and. You know, you'll, you'll connect the dots, you know, better and hopefully make your decisions, you know, pretty straightforward in most, most cases. So we'll be looking for other opportunities to bring other topics, you know, forward to the commission. If the commissioners have ideas, you know, please let me know and, you know, we'll try to work something in. We can also have the city attorney do some stuff. I really, I'm really excited about this new commission we have. I think there's a lot of great potential here. And so I, I just want to help arm you with as much as we can to help you really gel and. You know, be a good commission, you know, like we've had in the past. And like, I know this commission will be also. It's unusual to have this many new folks at one time, but it doesn't mean that's a bad thing at all. It could be a good thing in many ways. So. I've gotten a very good impression and vibe from everyone. I've enjoyed the one-on-one meetings that I've had with our newest commissioners. And I'm enjoying working with you as the chair, you know, this year. And we're definitely going to have to talk quite a bit about our upcoming appeal hearings and make sure we get that down pat. But there's definitely a lot of topics out there that we could do and. To the extent the commission wants them, I'd really like to try to do more of these kinds of things. The goal of just trying to help the commission. You know, just, you know, get their arms around this stuff a little more. It's nice having a night with no pressure. Too, because we'll have plenty of that most nights. So I'm glad we had an opportunity in our schedule here with a little break in projects to be able to do this tonight. Not rush it or do five projects, then try to talk about the general plan at 10 o'clock at night. You know, even I'd be a little less enthused then. So, but always if there's questions, you know, please email me or any of my staff, you know, we're always here and we love to hear from commissioners. And get to know everyone, you know, better and just develop that good rapport, just make everything smoother for everyone. And. Once I can learn to shut up, we can even, you know, get out of here, hopefully even a little earlier than. Might otherwise be. So I'm glad this worked out tonight.
Don't you, don't you always tell us it's how long we, it's, these meetings are as long as we make them, right?
Well, that is largely true. Tonight, most of it was on me. I will cop to that, but most nights. It is more on you guys to, you know, however many questions or however long you wish to debate. Really drives the, the length of the meeting, but, you know, we're not here to cut corners or. You know, we're here to, you know, do what we need to do, whether it takes five minutes or five hours. Hopefully not too many times of five hours.
Yeah, I will just note, we did receive some comments on item four also, and those were received by email.
Yeah, I believe those were in a similar vein to what we sort of attributed to item number three. So. That is public comment and you may take it as what you wish, but we will be having a heavy duty item at our second main meeting. So. You know, eat your Wheaties that day.
So we'll turn to. So we'll turn to part two for administration function, informal discussion, part A. I think this just is going off of continuation of where you ended. So I, I don't know if any commissioners have any additional requests for any topics they'd like to hear. Commissioner Hirsch.
Not a topic I'd like to hear, but I guess just a request, if you know, we're going to have a particular meeting that's heavier than usual, if the staff could maybe send the materials a little earlier than usual too.
We do endeavor to do that. That's not always, you know, possible, but we do endeavor to do that. And I also try to give the commission sort of a heads up if we aren't expecting a heavy agenda or potentially something very controversial. And I, I also work with the chair, you know, offline to make sure, you know, she's prepared for what, at least what we think is coming. And because the chair obviously has a critical role in orchestrating the meeting and making sure everyone has a chance to be heard. And not letting things kind of get out of hand, which, you know, has happened a couple of times, you know, over the years. So, but we will, especially if we have big documents, you know, an EIR or something like that, I'm going to give you that, you know, two, three, four weeks out. You know, whenever I can, things like that. It's too much to digest in, you know, five days. We will always endeavor to do that, but I can't promise we will be able to do it every single time.
I, I have a quick question just on, with the governor's reopening June fifteenth, is there any talk of in-person commission meetings or are we not going that?
I haven't heard anything on that. I'm sure we'll take our cues from the council. The council starts doing it, so will we.
Okay.
But I don't see us, there's no timetable to return to in person that I'm aware of at this point.
Thank you. If nothing further from the commissioners, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you again.
Good night. Take care, everyone.